Phone on, get this thing started here. Thank you for coming to tonight's evening's meeting. Got some members in the audience, that's cool. Familiar faces. Let's stand and stand for the pledge allegiance by Councilmember Davidson in a prayer.
Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts acknowledging the many blessings you have given us. Thank you for the opportunity to gather here as leaders and servants of this community. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we discuss matters that affect those we serve. Help us work together with unity and purpose, always seeking what is good and just. May our decisions reflect kindness, integrity, and a desire to uplift others. Thank you for entrusting us with this responsibility. We pray for your peace and presence in this room and in our hearts as we proceed. In your holy name we pray, amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Davidson. Councilmember Brill. Councilmember Bessel. Councilmember Paulus. Councilmember Pennington. Councilmember Kraft. Councilmember Myers.
Motion to excuse, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. That's okay. My computer's having a little issue up here, that's okay. Alrighty. Are there any agenda modifications? Or none, we'll move on. Executive session request.
Yes, to consider the purchase of property for public purpose. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to convene an executive session by the request of the city manager. Roll call please.
Councilmember Davidson. Councilmember Brill. Councilmember Bessel. Councilmember Pennington. Councilmember Kraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Alright, on the affirmative. Special presentations tonight. We have none. Citizen comments. There you go, sir. You're welcome to come up to the stand, the podium, state your name, and give about well for you. We'll catch you off probably in five minutes.
Thank you. Greetings, everybody. Frank and myself are here this evening in regards to a neighbor issue. It's been ongoing for almost a year now. It has been brought to the attention of the city. They have followed through, I think, with a court order and did some changes, but it's still an issue, so we are bringing it up to you just to see what else can be done.
The address of the...
Tom Campbell.
Tom?
Tom, yes.
And that is on your street?
He is on Firestone.
So he's corner to corner, okay.
Corner to corner, correct.
Mike, what are the issues? I mean, you say there's already a court order for making repairs to whatever needs to be done?
He is known for, come on on him. He's known for parking anything and everything in the yard, side yard, backyard. He's got about four or five mowers, I don't know, half dozen golf carts that are broken down, his pickup truck, a trailer, and it goes on and on, scattered across the yard. As far as I know, the city insisted that he removes them. They were put to the other side of the yard and in the front driveway, and they are still there, so not really any.
So are they now in the driveway, or are they now in another part of the yard?
They are in the driveway, covered in plastic.
That may be it, and Greg, I know we have a, you know, we're not allowed to park things in the grass, but it's paved in the backyard, or, you know, it has to be hard surface, et cetera. They call it the drip line or whatever, but if it's in the driveway, do you know anything about this case?
I do not know anything about this particular situation.
He was summoned to the court, and the court, I was told by the city that he was told he had to put the vehicles and so forth on a hard surface. And the city was, a week ago today, the 18th, the city was felt that he had complied with that order. Now, yesterday, Sunday, his truck was in the backyard again on the grass. So if he's been told that, and, you know, the vehicles might be there a day, or if he has a yard sale, vehicles are in the yard because they need the driveway for the yard sale, then he could park them on the street. But my name is Frank Rose.
And what's your address?
I've been a resident of the city of Fairfield for 47 years. My current address, I've been there 42 years, on Firestone.
And what's your number? Because it's recorded, so where does keep track? What's your address?
Mine's 6283, Tom's is 6265. So the person I've been talking to at the city is Jeff Trimpie.
Jeff also has a copy of a drone video that I flew over the house showing stacks of tires, holes in the ground, piles of dirt, everything you can imagine scattered throughout the yard, so it is a mess.
And I sent him a picture today of the truck being in the yard yesterday, and I've sent him other pictures too. He had a, I initially called the seventh month, 17th day of 2023. At that time, he had a shed that was in disrepair, and he had the vehicles that he parked on the yard. And in general, not that it's junk, but it has a junky appearance because of the amount... If you built a barn, a store all the stuff that he has on his, in the backyard in general, you'd need a pretty good sized barn. But of course, he don't have that barn, and he tries to cover it up. Well, let me tell you too, this year he put a new roof on his house. It took him two months to get that done. And the shed is still not done, and that's what we was talking about over a year ago. But it's good enough for the city right now, what he has done.
What we would normally do right now, I'm going to let you, Mr. Kathman can walk out with you out there and give you some, you know, and he can take names and take all this down, and he will get back to you probably tomorrow with an update from where the city stands, whether it's court or the planning, economic development, planning, zoning, that's his whole billywhack, so...
He has a ladder that's leaning against his house, it's been there since he put the roof on.
A 40-foot ladder, by the way.
It's been there since he got the roof on, it's still there, laying up against the house. He has three or four golf carts. Now, I consider them vehicles. I notice that the golf course, all their golf carts, when they're not in use, they're on solid ground, not on grass. Maybe that doesn't mean anything, but makes you think anyway. So he'll have three or four golf carts, he has two or three drills, he has a lot, just a lot of other stuff. Now, I'm not saying that he's maybe got a business operating out of his house because of all these things, because he'll load the golf carts on the trailer, leave with them, come back with four golf carts.
Parts usually, nothing works, nothing runs.
No. So, like I say, I'm not saying he's got a business operating out of his house, but he could have, he could be doing that. That could be part of it, which I'm sure would be a violation.
So is his driveway coming out right there by Muirfield?
Correct.
What is his backyard is my side yard.
Yep.
I overlook that all the time. If I'm out in the yard walking, somebody goes walking by, a lot of times I'll say, "What's going on over there?" I say, "Well, you see what I see."
Pretty ongoing forever.
Yeah, right. Now, he's got another problem. I think it's going to be a problem. There's a, the neighbor beside him has a privacy wall, and he's working, before he finishes, gets one thing done, he starts another. And now the fence that belongs to his neighbor, he's been digging up his yard.
Apparently, he's putting a pond in, right?
I don't know what he's doing.
So we've got four foot of topsoil piled up against the neighbor's fence, so it's just going to wash.
And the water is going to be running off into his yard, the mud in the water.
And they're going to address that too, so bring that up when you're talking to them, and they can address that because you're not allowed to do that, so...
If I could jump in here.
I would like to say one more thing.
Let me just explain, I, so we have a property maintenance code, and all of the things you've described do, would be violations of our property maintenance code. I am not familiar with this case, which kind of surprises me because I do see all of them before they go to court, but I don't, you know, those facts, as you're describing them, don't, I don't recall the photographs and things like that, but, you know, if it was in court, that means the city agreed that they were violations, and that's why he was cited to court, and from that process, it goes to court. And ultimately, he's given the opportunity to rectify those problems. I don't know the status of the court action, so I'm not going to speculate on where that is and if he's brought it into compliance. Our property maintenance code, you know, has, you know, certain rules and regulations. It's not just willy-nilly, we don't like the way it looks, it has to be some specific items. So I think speaking to you in more specific terms, once we are more familiar with this particular case, it might be helpful, we'll at least try to help you understand where that court proceeding is, where it's headed to, and if the violations are continuing, what are the next steps? So Greg and/or I can kind of help you through that.
Yeah, the other thing I just wanted to mention for the benefit of council is, we have a lot of folks that start a lot of projects and never seem to wrap them up, and it's kind of an ongoing process, you know, we give them a warning, we try to work with them to have them clean up their properties and finish their projects, and at a certain point, sometimes you have to reach an end point and cite them to municipal court. Usually, that gets people's attention if they've been dragging their feet a little bit. There's also a process, and again, I don't know if this case was dismissed or if it was, you know, put on probation, but once it's been in the court process, we have a much shorter leash than before it gets in the court process. So if someone has reached that point and they're still not taking it seriously, they will get cited back to court, and the court has, at a much quicker timeframe, and the court has some remedies and some other actions that they can take that will hopefully get this person's attention more quickly than the first time did, so... So I'll be happy to step out with you and try to get your information. I'm familiar, somewhat familiar with this property from what the zoning inspectors have shown me pictures and our meetings and things, so I know the property you're talking about, and it's an ongoing challenge. It's frustrating for us as well.
I'd like to bring up two more points. Most people mow their yard during the day. They work hard to get it done before dark. He waits for dark to mow the yard.
Eleven o'clock or later, we've got a mower with four, you know, very bright lights, spotlights running around.
That's a different thing, that's a noise ordinance there, so that you...
Well, I don't think, I understand the city of Fairfield does not have a noise ordinance.
There is, that's, I think...
It's after 11 o'clock, but I don't know that we would cite for a violation based on... I mean, just so you understand, there is a limit to how far we're going to push that. I mean, certain people behave different than we do and that sort of thing. I'm not trying to suggest that it's convenient or nice that your neighbor does that, but we also don't want to be total big brother on people, so... I appreciate your concerns, I'm not trying to discount any of the others because we obviously cited this person to court because we saw the violation, so...
And the other thing I'd like to bring up, for example, a golf cart, the kind that you ride, drive around. I brought it up to Jeff Trimpie, I said, "Well, how about a golf cart? That's a vehicle." I figure if you get in it and drive it, it's electric or gas, it's a vehicle. He said, "Well..." I says, "Yeah," he said, "It's a golf cart." I said, "Yeah, but we're talking three or four golf carts." And I think, I think they're vehicles. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I believe anyway. So I think we said all that we need.
Yes, thank you very much for your time.
I think you've got everybody's attention up here, Mr. Kathman will work with you out there, and I think you'll, at least at the very minimum, you'll be brought up to speed with exactly what's going on, so...
One other problem, when we tell this, when we talk to the city, they don't get back to us and let us know what's going on. And we have to call down and say, "Well, what's happening?" Because we're seeing no change. We have to call them, they don't call us back. Thank you for your...
Alrighty, yeah, I'll meet with Mr. Kathman out there, and, alright, any other citizen comments? Thank you, guys. No citizen comments. Before we start council reports, I was going to read a letter that you guys might be happy to hear. This, I'm going to let you read this. This is from the Hamilton County Auditor, Jessica Miranda. She goes, "Mr. Mayor Rotis, I'm pleased to announce that I'm returning $20 million from the Auditor's Real Estate Assessment Fund to local governments, school districts, and other taxing authorities in our county. Your entity's portion of this unspent balance is $3.67." They spent, sent us a letter, they're sending us $3.67 in Hamilton County. Goes, "There is a small part of Fairfield in Hamilton County, I don't know if you all know that." And I thought that was quite humorous, so don't spend it all in one spot, Mr. Hacker. Mark that down, make sure we get that deposit in there. I thought that was pretty humorous, so, yeah. And just to beat everybody else, because I know just about everybody, or everybody was there yesterday, I'm going to just tell you, the light-up parade was phenomenal. More vehicles than we, I think I've ever seen, more lights and more people, vendors. Everywhere I walked, everywhere, it was exciting everywhere I went. And one lady turned around, she goes, and I'm not making this up, she turned and was telling some ass, she goes, "New York doesn't have anything on Fairfield," and I just went, she didn't even know I was standing there, so that was cool. And then the other, of course, the other lady says, "I feel like I'm in a Hallmark movie." So I can't imagine judging, because not only was it a little faster pace, but you guys, I'm glad I'll never do that, I will never, that's just too much. So I'm sure other people want to do some comments here, but it was a great job.
Yeah, I thought it was excellent, so, great job to the Parks Department and the team putting that together, so spectacular. Enjoyed very much.
From Community and Public Relations, the winter edition of the Fairfield Flyer is now posted online and should be arriving in your mailboxes shortly. Applications are now being accepted for volunteers willing to serve on various, bless you, city boards and commissions. Anyone interested in applying through January 17th, 2025, and city council will make appointments following April. Information regarding the open positions can be found on the city's website under Boards and Commissions. If you have any questions, direct them to Alicia, she's excellent on trying to help through that. There's a community blood drive that will be hosted at the fire department headquarters on Nillis on January 13th from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. Appointments can be scheduled by calling 1-800-388-GIVE. And as we head into the new year, business owners should make sure their emergency contact information is up to date by submitting a business contact form that can be found on the city's website. Also, citizens with special needs who reside, attend school, are employed in the city of Fairfield should consider registering with the Fairfield Police Department as first responders can make address mobility, learning, development, and so forth, so... And all that's kept confidential, obviously. I want to thank Assistant City Manager Lori Murphy, who always attempts to make me look smart, fails, but attempts, so thank you, I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Major Mays, the 911, I'm sorry, the Code Red, that was recently used for the young man out in Westchester. Are we doing anything, I know some people that did not get called, and then I tried to explain to them why they need to put their... Is it still, they need register address and their phone number, their cell number, probably goes to a lot of landlines now? I think it dial's like nine, 1,000 phones a minute, if I remember right, or something like that, 1,000 numbers a minute. So, but it's important as a resident to keep your information, at least your cellphone updated. A lot of people have, of course, no more landlines, so, alright, this way. Mr. Kraft?
Thank you, sir. For Public Works, Jurgensen is paving South Goodmore Road early this next week. Final surface paving will be, oh, excuse me, will take place in early December with the roadway stripped for two lanes in each direction. I think that's actually supposed to be striped, that's my fault. Additionally, Prue says completed sidewalk on Route 4 between Camelot and Bohem, and they're working our way on north on Route 4 from the bypass diversion road area. Thank you.
Do we know the official date for John Gray to open up? Because right now it's pretty unofficial, because we cut through it all the time, sorry.
Yeah, the project's still on schedule. We're working at establishing connections with fire hydrants. So things are a little slow this week, but we're going to pick up again.
Great job overall, though.
Making good progress.
Middle of December or something, was that the target, or?
It was originally January, it was fantastic what they thought.
We're looking at 12-9, connecting hydrants on Lake Michigan at the monastery. 12-10, more fire hydrant installation. 12-11, Park Place. 12-12, Park Place, West Augusta, and then 12-16, final at Parks Maintenance.
Okay, so they'll pave all the way up to the middle of December before they shut down, so you got that probably right at the very end, or? We'll probably do some patch paving, they can do that anytime.
We're paving as we go. I think the plan is to pave half of John Gray Road next year.
Yeah, we'll do the, we'll mill and replace some of the surface with the paving program next year. They're just going to repair the trenches to be able to get the road open for the winter.
There you go, okay, great job. Councilmember Pennington, either one?
No. Well, Public Utilities, they covered that, so I'm good on that, but I wanted to say kudos for the parks. And I was one of the judges, and I thought it was better this year than last year, they did slow down a little bit, but, but we helped each other, didn't we? We got through it, and it was hard. It was hard because they were all fantastic, so, but thanks, kudos, over the top.
So, yeah, I don't want to be a broken record, but obviously, I mean, thank you. Just thank you for making us look good, you guys, I know everybody, it was a team effort, it wasn't just parks, so we appreciate it. But as phenomenal as the parade was, that's really just the beginning of all of the festivities that we do here in the city this Sunday, December 1st, from 1:00 to 4:00, is Christmas at the Mansion, hosted by the Four Seasons Garden Club. And the Festival of Trees is still going on and will continue through Christmas and the art gallery. And the Miami Valley Ballet begins its performance of The Nutcracker on December 6th, and already, most of those performances are sold out, so it's a great time to be in.
Good time, good job. Everything's already sold out, isn't it, Cole?
I want to add just a little bit to the Elijah Morgan, the Historical Society will be upstairs, and we'll have historical displays, so don't forget to go upstairs if you come by. It's always a fun event. We, I think last year, I forget the number, but it was the most we've had in all the years that we've had it. So it just seems like it grows every year, and I think it depends on the weather, too.
Alrighty, thank you, folks, and no public hearing tonight. We have the approval of the meeting held November 11th, hearing no objections will have to stand as written. Moving on to Old Business Development Services, Councilmember Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance amending ordinance number 166-84, the codified ordinance is Fairfield, Ohio, section 1130.01B2, the city of Fairfield, Ohio zoning map by approving the concept plan for the Whispering Hill planned unit development. I'd like to make a motion to amend per the Planning Commission recommendation.
Motion second for amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And let that stand as a second reading. Next, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a restricted fund agreement with Fairfield Community Foundation to establish a Fairfield Public Art Fund for public mural and sculpture installation and maintenance, authorize a grant in the amount of $75,000 to be made to the fund for establishing a mural program and plotting, piloting two murals in the town center and declaring an emergency. Like a first motion I'm going to make is to remove it from the table.
All in favor of removing it from the table?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Then I'm going to make a motion to remove this from the agenda. Just briefly, on that motion that I'm making, I want to say that we we really do want to look into the revitalization and ways to clean up the downtown area and the city-town area. I think this is a good idea and a good program that we could do, but there is some more information I would like on it personally, and I think that there are some other ways that we could go about spending some taxpayer money on cleaning up that area and making that what we've kind of talked about, so I'm going to move at this time to remove this from the agenda.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried, removed. Alright, Finance and Budget, Councilmember Brill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to amend ordinance number 166-23 entitled, "An Ordinance to Make Estimated Appropriations for the Expenses and Other Expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio During a Period Beginning January 1, 2024 and Ending December 31, 2024." This is a non-contractual appropriation of $75,000 for public art fund grant. I'd like to make a motion to remove this from the table.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And second, I'd like to make a motion to remove this from the agenda.
Motion second for remove from the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moving to New Business.
I'd like to make a motion to read all New Business by title only. Sorry, I was absorbed in reading something.
I know, I do that sometimes, I think, "Oh, everybody's quiet, I bet they're supposed to say something."
I knew it was me.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Alright, Development Services, Mr. Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for Development Services. The ordinance is to amend the zoning map for the city. There are two specific requests. First request is to change the zoning of 11,000 square feet from C3 to SE. This area is located off of Michael Lane, just east of GE Credit Union, and is used as a driveway entrance to Jungle Jim's International Market. The second request is to change the zoning of 9.3 acres from M2 to SE. This area is located off Michael Lane between the Fairfield Acres Mobile Home Park and Jungle Jim's International Market. The site had operated as a radio station with five radio towers located on site. The applicant purchased the property in June 2024 and has since removed all structures. Thank you.
Alright, Councilmember Davidson?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 166-84, the codified ordinance is Fairfield, Ohio, section 1130.01B2, city of Fairfield, Ohio zoning map. First reading, I'm going to set it for a public hearing December 9th, 2024.
For Public Safety, City Manager Scott Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for Public Safety. The ordinance is to adopt the Ohio Department of Health Emergency Action Plan related to the use of AEDs. The Ohio Legislature recently passed House Bill forty-seven, which now requires, among other things, the controlling authority of all sports and recreation locations maintained and operated by Ohio cities, larger townships, and counties to place an AED at each such location under its control. For purposes of this legislation, sports and recreation locations include indoor recreation centers, facilities, gymnasiums, swimming pools, and playing fields that are designated, operated, and maintained for those uses, thank you.
All right, for Mr. Paulus, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance adopting the Ohio Department of Health Model Emergency Action Plan for the use of automated external defibrillators, AEDs, developed pursuant to section three seven zero one point eight five one of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring this an emergency. Like to make motions to suspend second, third readings.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Oh, that's right, I sure did, I'm just flying right along, aren't I? I did, I paused, you know, I was reading, sorry about that. Yeah, there's no audience out here, so, well, you guys, but you count, we love you. All right, City Manager for Finance and Budget.
We have three ordinances tonight for Finance and Budget. All three ordinances are related to appropriations. The first ordinance is for supplemental appropriations. After thorough analysis of the city's fund balances, amounts are recommended for transfer to support ongoing strategic initiatives. The contractual appropriations total fifty thousand and are for drainage improvements at South Trace Golf Course. The non-contractual appropriations total one hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and includes six projects from the Parks and Recreation and Public Utilities Department, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Brill, that's spent some money here, huh?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first ordinance is to amend ordinance number one six six dash two-three entitled, an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January one, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. This is the supplemental appropriation, and I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Well, I guess I, okay, motion in second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Motion for adoption.
Motion second for adomage, co- adoption, comments from audience, comments from council, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Second is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one six six dash two-three entitled, an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January one, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. This is for the contractual appropriations for the South Trace Park, and I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience, comments from council, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And the third is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one six six dash two-three entitled, an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period, January one, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. This is the six non-contractual projects, and I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
At motion for adoption.
Second for adoption, comments from audience, comments from council, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read the next meeting schedule note that it has changed a little bit?
Monday, December ninth, regular meeting, six o'clock P M. Monday, January thirteenth, council manager briefing, six P M, regular meeting, seven P M. Monday, January twenty-seventh, council manager briefing, six P M, regular meeting, seven P M.
All right, we'll move to executive session.